Roll call, call for the city council meeting of June 1st, 2016 at 9:00 AM. Mr. Mersky, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, please rise for a moment, some meditation and pledge of allegiance.
Again, this morning, we asked that we remember all of those in our community that are least fortunate or less fortunate than we are, and all of those who have lost loved ones since the last time we were in these chambers, and we ask our God and Creator to give us the wisdom and the proper information to make the best decisions for the citizens of the city of Erie.
Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of minutes from the city council meeting of May 18th, 2016, and bills for payment on April 27th and June 3rd, 2016. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Mersky.
Do we have any requests for repository sales? Any requests for repository sales? Seeing none, we'll continue on. Citizens to be heard, Mr. Randy Barnes.
You just said something. I didn't hear what it was. Sorry about that.
Good morning, council president, council administration guests. My name is Randy Barnes, 109 Walton Point, Erie, Pennsylvania. And I think you probably have seen it, and I see it, it seems like almost daily, we're in the media, we're seeing about groups of people getting together and talking and trying to charter out to help their small part of the city and improve, and which will make all the parts stronger. And I think that's an encouraging thing, and I hope that council can kind of help lead us and take some strong direction. I think one of these things, before I talk about that, they say, "We're coming up on a two-year anniversary." The two-year anniversary is when three sitting council people voted to give Mr. Clem $1,000 a month for 24 months. And those three city council people were Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, and Mr. Jones. And in these two years, initially, it was to help the incoming clerk get up to speed and archive some records. And of course, we know the records were archived last year. But I have to think, how would I feel if I was a person that applied for a job, interviewed for the job, was picked to be the best candidate over other candidates, yet in two years, yet to hear anybody on council at the end of the meeting say that this person has now been trained and we won't need Mr. Clem again? Now, until we hear that, the supposition is that we still may need Mr. Clem for $1,000 a month. I encourage council to resist the urge to continue to give their friend $1,000 a month, because I think that the current clerk was trained the day she stepped on the job two years ago, and she did the job before that, and she's done a fine job. So this thing of giving our friends and family extra bonuses when they retire, or extra whatever, has got to stop. I think council has to open their eyes and think more, and look at the big picture, and think more of this regionalism. Right now, you have city residents paying taxes, who goes to the busing. You have city residents that pay county taxes, and it goes toward the busing. So they're paying twice. Here you have the county that says, "I want to take over this and relieve that double burden on the city taxpayers," but yet we have a council that says, "Wait a minute, wait a minute. We're losing some of our power?" You have no power. Drive around the city. Do you think you've done a good job? Do you think city council and the administration have done a good job for the past 20 years in this city? So what's wrong with change? Are you so resistant to change that you have to hire Mr. Clem for 24 months because we're having a new clerk? Or because the city or the county wants to fund all the busing? You're so resistant to change? Well, guess what? If you don't change, nothing's going to happen. We're going to be down here two years, we're not talking about the same problems. This narrow-sided vision this county, this city council has along with the administration that, "Well, we can't give up that bus. We'll have no representation. They're going to take the bus away from the inner city." Move on. Like the businessman has the signs on 12th Street, how like two councils are fighting over what? What are we fighting over? Is it an ego thing? Are egos that big that we can't set them aside when we come in and be sworn in to do what rights for the citizens of Erie? I hear all the time about how we do everything in the city, and these county residents take advantage of it and don't contribute. We're hearing you having a chamber just across the square trying to help the county residents contribute more to that asset that happens to be located within the city. So I think there's got a lot of things have to change, and I hope that at some point, if not today, but in the near future, one of those three city councilmen that voted to give Mr. Clem $1,000 a month for 24 months will step forward and do the right thing and acknowledge that the current city clerk has done a fine job and is very well-trained, and maybe thank Mr. Clem for all the advice and all that help he's given council and the current clerk for the last two years, because I think that would be a fitting end to this saga that's lasted way too long. Thank you very much, and have a good day.
Thank you. Our next citizen to be heard, Julie Minnick.
My name is Julie Minnick. I live at 1027 West 37th Street, zip code 16508, and I'm here representing all of Erie, which represents a large portion of bus riders. I'm asking you once again to negotiate the EM Charter. The clock is ticking, but what you don't realize is that this can be a win-win for both of you. We live in a community. We have to work together. And people are watching. Pendot is watching, and perhaps investors are watching. I know that these two councils will have to work in the future, so it would be beneficial if you could work together now. Both councils can benefit. Both councils can win. You have to look at this as a chance to grow, a chance to help each other out. Think of it as an opportunity. I know that there is going to be a proposal from county council submitted to you. They have some good suggestions and some good points. For instance, they want the charter to last 20 years. That's one generation. With the rapid progress of technology, a lot could happen in 20 years. Buses could be automated in 20 years. It's already happening in Pittsburgh. Fixed routes could be a thing of the past. I know it's been a point of contention, but again, look at this as an opportunity to work together. Secondly, I know that there is a ridership committee already. I should know, I'm on it. What county council wants to do is actually put it in the charter. That way, it always exists. Right now, the ridership committee is voluntary at EMTA's discretion, but they want to make it mandatory. A ridership advisory committee is a good idea. In fact, it's a necessary thing. It should be written into the charter. Another major point of disagreement is board expansion. I've heard a lot about that. But it also should be looked at as a futuristic move. In the future, major businesses, major industries could be in accounting. In fact, most people who've talked to me personally have suggested board expansion. The clock is ticking. The time to negotiate is now. The full deadline for the charter is September 15th, but county council is actually pushing for a deadline of June 30th. Now, this whole charter issue reminds me of an old story, and I hope you indulge me. I love stories. It's an old story between, of an ant and a dove. An ant's drinking along the river, and all of a sudden, a current comes and sweeps him away. There's a dove in the tree above, and she sees this. She snaps off a leaf, and it falls gently into the water. The ant grabs onto the leaf and goes to shore. While the ant is riding down the river, the ant notices that there's a bird catcher with a giant net, and he knows that that bird catcher wants to capture the dove. He has a plan. When he gets to shore, he bites the bird catcher, and the bird catcher screams, which scares the dove, which makes her fly away to safety. Two lives saved. The reason I bring this story up is because you never know when you're going to need each other. This is a whole community. We all work together. And I'm asking you to be receptive to all of Erie possibly mediating a meeting between city and county council. I have business cards, if you wouldn't mind passing me that, because I am going to be emailing you, so I just want you to be aware.
Any other citizens to be heard? Carrie Taft. Carrie Taft. Amy Comptor is not here. Any other citizens to be heard? Any other citizens to be heard?
Thank you so much.
Really thank you. Seeing none, we'll continue on.
Ordinances for final passage. Council file 15953, official ordinance number 152016. An ordinance closing and vacating an alley which is described as a 10-foot by 90-foot parcel of land that abuts the following parcels: 316 West 16th Street, 317 West 16th Street, and 1613 Hickory Street, with reservation of existing utility rights away. By Mr. Brennan, and seconded by Mr. Witherspoon, the council file ordinance bill number 15953, and now known as official file ordinance number 152016, be finally passed by the city council. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Mersky. City council pass official file ordinance number 152016, finally by a 7, nay 0. New business.
Mr. President, I'd like to move the balance of the agenda.
I'll second.
Any separation?
I'd like to separate one under new businesses for clarification of my comments.
Okay, number one. Any other separation?
Moving the balance of the agenda, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Mersky. By Mr. Jones, seconded by Mr. Kwiatowski, that the proposed repository sale, appropriately commonly known as 482 East 17th Street, by the Erie County Tax Claim Bureau, to Brenton-Davis, 8370 Wattsburg Road, Erie PA, in the amount of $250, be hereby approved.
Okay, I separated this because I received some phone calls while I was gone this week, and just had the opportunity this morning to actually look at it. And I talked to Ms. Green about my concerns, and I kind of feel a little bit better about it. But I want to go on notice as saying that these repository sales that come before us, I'm not going to be so eager to okay all of them until I start realizing what they want to do with them, because when you looked at this one property, I can understand the neighbors' worries when they look across the street, and I didn't realize when the gentleman bought the property, and I think he's in the process of cleaning it. But having old vehicles that are rusty situation with tires flattened, that's not acceptable any longer. If we read the Bukey report, and we like to cite that when it comes to our benefit, then we're going to have to live by those comments. And I think neighbors have a right to expect that when we give these repository sales out to people, that they're not out-of-town dealers that are using them for equity sales a little more, and they end up being the same problem we had before. So I'm going to start looking at them with a little bit more, and I don't care. I don't care what the legal department says. I'll vote no on these things if I don't feel that they're proper any longer. On this one, I think Ms. Green has convinced me that, I think I'm willing to give this gentleman a chance, and so I will be casting a yes vote today.
Mr. President, just in agreement with what Mr. Kwiatowski has said, and that's why the last, well, maybe five, six years ago, that's why we have individuals who are requesting repository sales come before this council, and they have to give their identification. If they are out of city, out of state, they have to have a local representative that we have access to as a city, so that, you know, those concerns can be handled, and, you know, people don't disappear, you know, out of sight, not of mind. So your concerns, I think, are shared with all of us in the city and council, and there are some things in place. We haven't had to, that I know of, had to enact a lot of, you know, going after folks and finding that we haven't had as many problems since people have to come before this body. There was a time when these were just on the agenda, and they would just kind of push, 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 unless there was some glaring issue from the administration. But now, it is a much more interactive, we see a face to a name, we have identification and contact information as well. So I just wanted to just kind of give some clarity to that, and you're right on it. Thank you.
All right, roll call. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Mersky. That'll take us to committee reports, Mr. President.
Any reports, Mrs. Arrington?
Hi. I had the pleasure last week to go into Memphis, Tennessee, to a NUSA conference on communities, excuse me. It was an awesome conference. Over 1,000 people from all over the world were there. They were talking about community policing, neighborhoods, violence. We broke out into workshops for three days. I learned a lot, and I'm going to be bringing some of the stuff that I heard and learned down there to the table and see if we can implement up here in the city of Erie, because I think if it's working in these other cities that's bigger than ours, it will work in ours. So that was a nice trip that I took, and I look forward to the one next year. They have one every year. And actually, one of our leaders in the community, Paul Gamble, was just voted to the board. So he's on a NUSA conference, so maybe one day, we can bring this conference to Erie. You know, it would really do our economy really well. It probably was about maybe 1,500 to 2,000 people there. The hotels made out good, the places to eat, and it was an awesome conference, and I really enjoyed myself. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Arrington. Thank you, Mr. President. No report this morning.
I don't really have a report, but I just wanted to tell Ms. Minnick out there that when you talk about the appointment of a ridership committee, those are easy things to solve, but just so you know, that was never mentioned, and never was a concern to them at the meeting that we had with them, because that's an easy issue. That's not even negotiable. It should be just, you know, talk, and that's it, and it's over. And with that, I have no report.
Thank you, Mr. Kwiatowski.
Thank you. Mr. President, a couple items I want to report on. I attended the Eastside Multicultural Community Event. It was called Celebrate EMC. It was on May 21st. Great attendance, about 250 people attended. The event, a lot of the funding was by Sister St. Joseph. They sponsored it, but a lot of other agencies were involved in the day. But it was a true collaboration. A lot of groups were in attendance. Part of the event was a cleanup effort for the neighborhood. They had a lunch, a band, and there were news and education on neighborhood initiatives that are going on right now. So definitely thank you to Sister St. Joseph for that event. Also attended the Port Authority Board Meeting on the 24th. The amphitheater roof structure bid was awarded to E. Austin, so that work will be done at the end of, I believe, at the end of summer, not the beginning, because they have a temporary structure for the concerts that are coming up. Port Authority continues to work on strategic planning. They announced their eight great Tuesdays concerts that are going to be starting soon. I guess it's, I'm not sure of the first date offhand. And also, they changed their public meetings. Their public meetings were on Tuesdays, now they're on Thursdays. So that's a change. If you're ever looking to go to a meeting, make sure and look at the date. I think they publish that in the newspaper, the update. And lastly, I wanted to report on the, I attended the Robbins Blast Neighborhood Watch Meeting this past week. Sarah Galloway from the city, they both attended. They had a lot of questions on tree trimming and different things they want to do with Pebble Park and throughout their neighborhood. One of the things they want to do is look, seek funding for a gazebo. It's part of a plan that they want to install in the next year or two, and I know Sarah had given them some input on how to go about building that structure and possible resources for funding. But the organization is doing a lot of great things in the neighborhood, and there are a lot of people are involved, and it was a very good meeting. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, the Erie Housing Authority is continuing their plans to seek a new executive director. Currently, Mr. Dan Rosner is the acting executive director, and Mr. Mike Fraley, assistant director. They are doing a fantastic job. They're keeping the legacy of Mr. Heran alive. They, both of them are very concerned about residents of public housing, and the only thing that has changed at the Housing Authority is the presence of Mr. Heran. So he did an outstanding job in preparing these two individuals to continue. The search committee is, has been organized, and they will be seeking or having interview and seeking the replacement of Mr. Heran. The plans are not final yet, but they are moving right along. The second thing I'd like to say, that this is the 26th year of the Summer Basketball League, and let everyone know that it's called Spoons League, and the Spoons League is part of my last name, and it's simply a tag. We could have called it Hoop De Do, League. It don't matter. But the point is, we have close to 300, and my goal is 300 youths participating, five days a week, five hours a day. And that means they are not in trouble, they're not doing something that would cause them to be dealing with the law enforcement. They are there. And I understand that there's some concerns about the league. But I say to those who have some negative feelings for some reason, volunteer, and you'll see what we do there. It's very disappointing for folks to, in this day and age, to downgrade a program that's been there for 26 years. Now, if you don't like Melvin Witherspoon, then you deal with Melvin Witherspoon personally, and I guarantee you, it will be resolved, oh, maybe in the first five minutes of the But the website, sign up, website is open, www.spoonsleague.org, and you sign up. We ask the parents to sign them up, therefore, they open their own account, and you can see where your son's at when he plays, or the daughter, either one. And also, we have a Biddy Basketball Camp, which is basically a city recreation league that begins last Monday in June, five, six, seven, eight-year-olds. It's a camp for two hours a day, five days a week. Lunch is provided by Sherry McKinnam from the YMCA. Again, that's another city recreation program. So those two that I just mentioned, it's basically a city program, a city recreation program. They support us for the last 25 years, and the kids they support are their kids. It's not only city kids, it's also kids that come from the county. Last year, last five years, we allowed kids that traveled from Union City to play in our league, because we got the best league, and it's not the PIA type league. You're going to get knocked around, you're going to get banged, and parents bring their kids up there to learn from other kids, from the kids that live in the hood. And I guarantee you, they tell me, it's not a camp, but they learn a lot from the individuals. But what they really do is they bond and find out that all the kids that live in the hood are not bad. There's a lot of friends. And one particular, and I always use them as an example, Charlie Lichtenwalter came in, he lived in the city, but he came in very timid, played three years, he established himself. He made friends. Charlie can go in the hood right now, today, and they know him, and he will not be harmed. That's what I do. I'm a climate changer. That's what I do. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. Once again, just following up with Mal, with the Summer Jobs Parks and Recreation Program. It's going to take parents and grandparents, get your kids signed up. Take advantage of this. Between the city and the sponsors, there's three-quarters of a million, about, about $750,000 that is put towards this program yearly. And it's not just basketball or tennis, it's not just sports. There's a lot of different theater, I believe, and arts. I mean, there's a lot of things for these kids to do during the day that they get, as well as get fed, so if some of the parents are working. So there is things for our youth to do during the summer that the city does provide, and if there's one thing that's definitely, definitely an asset that we can do for our kids, it's this summer rec program. Naturally, with the MTA, I did attend the recent, most recent meeting with the board. Julie, I want to thank her for her comments here today. What we've been, since our first meeting that we did with the county, our initial meeting we met with county council, since then, we've probably more or less have had the deputy secretary be like the mediator. I mean, they would say what they want, which they're really, they're, and I hate to use the term demands, but that's almost what it is. They want the takeover. We understand that. But we were trying to negotiate through Toi Farver, and we did suggest, even within the last week, that even if we shorten that charter to 20 years, because it's, we got something that is still working, growing, it is regionalized, it's not broken. So maybe in 20 years, it will be broken, or maybe something will need to be adjusted. Maybe in 10 years, something will need to be done, maybe in five. But right now, change is not needed at the MTA. It does work. So naturally, council hasn't discussed it since the last response from the county on this, and we will, and we'll go from there. But with that... But with that being said, we're not done with this. We're going to work together as our council and work with county council as we see fit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Winarski. Just a couple things to report. Probably the biggest thing that happened with the EMTA, which other people have discussed, was the school district had a meeting and there was financial issue with the school district. I talked to the realtor in town, and they tell you that when people come to this town, they ask what are the local schools like. So schools are important, good schools are important to this city. And Mr. Jones is taking the lead on advocating for the school district, and I appreciate that he did meet with Dr. Babbitt prior to the school board meeting, just to get his take on where things are going and with the district and really advocating for the fair funding formula. This council has adopted a position of support for the fair funding formula. We did write to the leadership of both parties, expressing our concern about Erie's lack of fair funding. Pleased to report that they are instituting a fair funding formula at the state level. However, it's only on new monies issued, not on existing monies. And so those are things that we continue to fight for for our schools because we understand in our council that good schools are important to the city. I know, I'm in a unique situation because I teach in the school district, so I see the students every day, and I've taught in other districts, and you really have a case of happen-nots. When you have after-school programs in other districts that we can't afford, and you have recreational activities, even busing to go on a field trip, that our city kids cannot afford, or our school district to go. These are serious issues, and we need to make sure that we cooperate with the school district and work to ensure that every child has a good school to go. I attended the zoo parade. It was the 15th anniversary of the zoo parade. It was an excellent time. So many bands, floats, and the zoo is a wonderful asset to the city. If you haven't been to the zoo recently, I encourage you to check it out. Councilman Brennan designed one or two, I don't know if a few of those exhibits, four, four of the exhibits. So you can see his handiwork there. And it's a, for a city our size to have a zoo is a real asset. So I encourage you to go out and support our Erie Zoo. Schools are out for the summer next week. Please be safe driving. The kids are out. They'll be on their bikes. The weather's breaking. It's getting nice out. Be aware, not only of the school kids, but also the motorcycles out there. As the weather improves, people want to be outside. There's a lot more activity. As you're driving, please be safe. And finally, my wife and I attended the celebration for the closing of St. Peter's Cathedral School. St. Peter's educated many civic and business leaders in this community, and it's a shame that demographics have changed in this city, and the need for these Catholic schools is dwindling. I spoke with the priest there. We're hoping that the historic building of the original school can be preserved for future use. Built in 1800s, it's an excellent, the woodworking in it is exquisite, and that's something that I'd like to work with preservation here to make sure that that building gets a reuse fitting for the architecture that it has. And with that, that concludes my report.
I just want to let remind everyone and thank all of our council people for having their summer rec guides in front of them. All the information is available on the city's website. The guides have gone home with schoolchildren. They were delivered in the Erie Times News. Lots of summer programs to get your kids involved with. Spoons, I don't want to repeat what everyone has said, but Spoons Basketball League, the biddy camp, Footlights Theater, lots and lots of good programs to keep our kids active and busy this summer. That doesn't even touch on all of the activities that the Housing Authority offers for their residents. So keep in mind that time is of the essence, and we need to get those kids registered so we can keep them busy this summer. Summer music series, the Sounds of Summer Music Series starts on Mondays, June 6th. The first one is going to be at the Curry Shell Apartments. We are having a summer concert at Perry Square Pavilion that will take place on Monday, June 13th, and all of those concerts start at 7:00 PM. So we hope to get some people downtown, especially to break in the new pavilion. Have a great day.
Thank you, Ms. Peck. Mr. President.
I saw you.
Just want to let the citizens know that there is a Memorial Day tradition that I didn't attend, but I received so many phone calls and pictures on Facebook. The basketball court, which is called Spoons Court, but again, it's Penn Leg property, but they handed over to the city years ago to have a recreational outdoor facility in that area of the city. And the tradition is Memorial Day where young men get together. And I was told that there was between 80 and 90 young men at the court playing. And I was also told that out of that 80 to 90 individuals, 95% played in the league. So we are doing something there to the folks that question that. And out of that 85, 90, I guess about nine of them was in the Jones family. And we were all there Monday morning. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Witherspoon. With that, this meeting is adjourned.
City council adjourns at 9:42. Mr. Mursky, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon.